To the Republic, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Brinkley?
Good evening, Lord.
Thank you so much. It's been a wonderful day, a great day, Ken. We hope you can give us some wisdom to have a great meeting tonight so we live this city forward. Bless the people that turned out to support our efforts. And we ask that you look over all those who are in desperate need, who are asking in your name. I'm in.
Welcome everyone here tonight. We are a little wild, but we do have a forum, we have three council members and the mayor, so that makes a forum here. Cummings is out of town, and I think Mr. Rush is out of town, and Mr. Goodman, I think, has succumbed to this flu that everybody seems to be getting. So, we're gonna do some well, and he does sound pretty bad, I thought he was on the phone. He's only recovering anyway. I will interplay in the motion to approve the agenda. Does anyone want to make a change? Have a motion, have a say?
Sir.
Any other discussions? No, those are flagrant, if I was saying aye, I oppose no, all women go to the motion. You have the, you do have in your package there the financials for January 2013. So, if you have any questions there, Nathan is here to answer those. Anyone have any? If not, we'll move into the public input period. And Byron, Doc, and Carol, they have some questions, comments, any problems with their community.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We're not here asking for money, but we would take it. What we are here is to ask your assistance. We have a health hazard in our city and in our particular community. And several others probably, but in ours in particular, there's a detention plot at each end of our community. I live in the village of Riverstone. And on one end, Carol worked real diligently and got the people together who don't want to admit they own them, once they get their land reed on. But they cleaned that one out. The one behind my house has not been cleaned in heavy years.
When we first moved in, we came to come, okay, I called the city several times about this, okay? And they finally got them to come in. At that time, it wasn't even part of the fence. And the culvert was so full, it drained off. The stand, the end hole in the middle of it had reached the hundred-year flood plain whenever we had a heavy rain. So, whoever within the city worked with them and got them to go ahead and take care of it at that time. Since that time, it has not been pressed at all.
Trees are as big as this building inside. We have a big mosquito problem. We cannot go out in our backyard, especially at night, the mosquitoes eat you up. I'm sure the water is holding in there, and it needs to be cleaned. And we're not asking you to do it, we're just asking you to support us in forcing the people who own it to do it.
Joby?
Yes, sir.
You got any thoughts on that, how the best way to approach that might be?
Yeah, those are regional ponds scattered throughout the Riverstone development, if I'm recalling that correctly. Seems to me like, I think all the different individual parcels who drain to those ponds have a maintenance responsibility. And it seems like each one of them would need to pitch in on the maintenance.
Who was the developer in that? In your area, in your?
Yeah, ours?
Yeah.
No.
New Life Homes.
New Life Homes.
New Life Homes.
New Life Homes.
That's a, that's a pure development.
Huh? Our, yeah.
That's how, the pond is actually, it ended up-
When we were talking about it, right, behind the park.
And it ended up being two or three different responsible parties. What happened was, there was a citation, that's when I was the municipal court judge doing soil erosion cases. There was a citation issued, which forced everybody to get together and talk. And there actually came to court, but-
Yeah.
And they probably not spoken sense about it.
The complication is who's actually responsible, but somebody is.
So, we find out and-
So, Joby, could you look into that?
I'll see.
See what you can find out and get back to these folks and-
All of our community supports this. Some people in our community have gotten petitions signed by about ninety percent of the people to ask you to help us, and we would appreciate it. But thank you.
Yeah, probably have to do the same thing, have my, have some kind of citation and go from there. Thank you.
The pot, the stand pipe on that end has no manhole cover on it. The children a couple of years ago were running through it playing and threw the lid down. And it stood on its side in the mud. And I called the city two or three times and nothing happened. Everybody said it was somebody else's responsibility. So, that still is an open manhole. Besides the fact that that area gathers trash from the businesses and whatever around. You know, you've got garbage from your fast food places and cans and whatever that go down there and stay. So, you know, we pretty well screened it out, but it's more than just a high score, it's a health issue.
Joby, we're trying to work reality on that and keep you advised most of where what's going on with it. See if you can get something good.
One thing I did want to say too, I have talked to several of you at different times about the fire department. And they have been very supportive. We are within close proximity, so we don't have some of the issues that some of the places do. But the more I learn, the more I understand the combination of what's available and what's being asked for. And I know that it's real important that we have more fire stations than we do have. I do not believe the way that it's being presented is the most reasonable way to do it. Because we won't be affected as seniors initially. But anybody who is younger, that's the working public that we've endeavored on to support the communities, they will be impacted over the next four years, probably as much as a sixty percent increase in their taxes, which can be a detriment to the city. It can be a detriment to people moving here. It can be a detriment to a lot of different things. But I think the main thing that we need to think about in all of this is, we do need fire stations. There's a more economical way to get this done. And we are putting the burden of it on the young people that are paying taxes at the full tilt, at a time when it's really tough to make it go.
Thank you. Under old business, discussion of council meeting format, Mr. Bryan had indicated that, he was not at the last meeting, but he'd indicated that he had already spoken about that at the previous meeting. And I think it's something that, you know, we can, we can look at if we choose to do so for our next meeting, unless someone else wants to discuss that. We can, okay, we can just move it to our next meeting unless Mr. Bryan doesn't point it on there. But we're sort of, we're sort of doing it anyways, I don't know what difference it makes, you know, quite honestly. All right, the employee pension plan, plan recommendations from the Employee Pension Plan Committee, Ms. Councilman Hubbard.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. I'd like, of course, that, I think, everybody participated, that has participated on the committee. We've been meeting, I don't know, five or six months, trying to work through and come up with what we think is a more equitable plan for our city. And I'd like to kind of touch or highlight some of the points and put that forth. And we have two gentlemen that could possibly be involved that are here in the audience. So, if there's some questions that need to be answered, I would ask council to give me the okay to recognize them. Let's start off with what our goals were as far as what we want to do with the pension. I think most everybody has seen in the news of various cities that just have to walk away from their pension plans, and that's the last thing that this, this city's going to do. And we're not in danger of doing that. I want to make that very clear. We are nowhere in danger of doing that. We're approximately, at the end of, during last year, we were approximately seventy-two percent funded as far as what's our liabilities were. With the recent valuations that we just got for calendar year twelve, which is, actually comes to us in January, that our value, valuation is up, we're now at seventy-six, it's a change, which is going in the right direction, George. What we as a, at the committee kind of set as a goal, if we get in the eighty-five to ninety percent, folks, we're in the top ten percent of cities around, around this country. So, again, I'd just like to state that we're in a good position. One of the things that we wanted to do to make sure that, and I know many city employees have been concerned about that, they knew these meetings were going on. Our recommendations coming out of committee will be that there'll be zero change to the employees that are presently employed with the city. We have a very, very good plan. Some people call it a rich plan, and it is a good plan. As compared, and we have comparisons of what most of the cities in the state of Georgia have, and I've got it here for anybody who'd like to view it. We are up there as a very rich plan. There will be no change to that, so these city employees that have any concern, they should not have that. It's going to stay like it is. What we are going to recommend though, is for new employees that come aboard after the time that we effectively put this in motion. Right now, there's a multiplier, and Mr. Mary, if I'm getting too lengthy?
Go ahead, I'll carry you down.
Yeah, I know, you're good with that. It's our multiplier, and when you figure your benefits at retirement is at a two-point-five multiplier. Just use that as a reference. That's very good. We're going to recommend for employees that are joining after the plan is put into effect that it will drop down to one-point-two-five, which is more common amongst all the cities in the, in the state. At the suggestion of Mr. Cummings, who was a member of our committee, who's on, he's cruising right now, but that after ten years, employees that stays there ten years, we will jump them back up to a two-point-zero multiplier, which again is very good. At the same time, we're going to suggest that we, now let me back up a minute here and talk, give you some reasons for why we're doing what we are going to suggest. If you look at a stool that has three legs, you may have seen these diagrams. For retirement, you have one leg that's going to be social security. We all understand the difficulties there. And the other leg would be a pension plan that would come from the city. But in today's environment, everybody, regardless of where you stand, everybody is going to have to have that third leg in order for that retirement to be stable. And that third leg has got to come from the individuals. So, we are going to suggest with the benefits that we already have in the pension plan that the city supplies, that we're going to recommend a defined contribution, which means that the employee will have the opportunity, if they choose to, it's an elective situation, to have two percent of their salary withheld. Then the city will match that two percent, it's up to two percent, and that will be free money to them. And the other thing is, it will be their money, which means if they should choose to leave the employment of the city, that money goes with them. So, it, it is free money. They can contribute more than the two percent, but the city will only match up, match the two. Now, sometime in the future, if the council and committee approve, they can, they can move that two percent either up or down, depending on economic conditions. Under the defined contribution plan, let me back up again. We have studied four different companies in depth about their proposal as to how to handle our retirement plans. We wanted to go through and look at all of them and see what new wrinkles might be there, what their suggestions would be, and try to do as much comparison that we could do and come up with what we think is the best for our city and our employees. Our recommendations at this point is to stay where we are with the defined, defined benefit plan, which is the largest portion of their retirement, which is GMA. They have done an excellent job. They worked with us since, I think, nineteen-seventy-five, I believe that's when we started with them. And their costs are in line, they have good reporting. It's a very, very large, they represent municipalities all over the state. I forget the exact number of billion dollars that they have under management. And they have done an extremely good job for us, and we think that we should remain there. At the same time, council people, you have seen some charts, or one particular chart in the, in the agenda attachments. As you can see, that blue line represents if we make no changes. And as you can see, as the years go out, the costs go up. So, our, what we're trying to do is to protect the citizens, but, I mean, the employees, but at the same time, take some stress off the city. We will still reach in about four to five years, somewhere between eighty-five and ninety percent funded. But at the same time, as you can see with the red, green, the green representing the defined contribution, that the chart, that the, it starts to level out, to where our premiums, which are almost eight-hundred thousand dollars, will start to, they won't go down, but they won't go up as much as the liability goes up. And that's what we're trying to do, is to reduce the percentage that has to be contributed. The green area is the defined contribution. If the councilman, Ms. Mary, if you have any questions, please jump in. That's our recommendation, the defined contribution area. GMA also offers defined contribution. But, and the committee voted, we head nodded, that, because you don't vote in the committee, but we head nodded that GMA was something that, that would be good for both. And our HR director, Lori Waters, has done an excellent job and has a long-time working relationship there. And she's very comfortable with that. And there's one of the things that we could not do as a city is take on the burden of having to administrate this, because she would have to have a couple of people working for her, and that's just not the way we want to do it. We wanted to pass that along to the carriers. But at the same time, when you start talking about defined contribution, that's where the employee is going to start making some decisions about their own future as far as what they're going to have at retirement. And each individual's, their families, they're somewhat different, and their goals might, will differ a good bit. So, it's hard to have a plan that fits all. The city is going to take on the major part of it with the defined benefit, but the defined contribution is going to be in the hands of the employee, if they choose to participate. I have recommended that we consider using Edward Jones as the organization that works with the defined contribution. And please let me take a minute to explain that. There are many employees and people that just don't understand the financial markets. They don't, don't know a lot of the legal taxes, they don't know about wills, they don't know about insurance, they don't know about a lot of these things. They continue to get more and more complicated as the years go. To have an organization like Edward Jones, and this is a little bit of an advertisement, who are rated number one in many, many cases. They were speaking at the Chamber of Breakfast this morning and had an excellent speaker, but I didn't realize how many accolades and awards they have received over the years as such a top-notch organization. But their counselors and financial planners that will sit down and discuss individually with any employee, regardless of whatever their job may be, about their plans for their families and their future. And there, I think there's eight or maybe ten representative, Kelly, how many in the-
There's eight in Cherokee County.
Eight in Cherokee County, and with the possibility of another one being added, but gentleman working in your office?
All the time.
All the time.
Yeah.
So, that they're, and they're, if they're outside the county, do you- So that they're, and they're, if they're outside the county, these other counties have representatives as well. And these, and the employee can walk in there and just set an appointment, go in with their spouse or without, and sit down and just one-on-one, have a discussion. These are professional people that are on the corner of downtowns to talk to these individuals, and I think that is needed, that they need to be educated. And there's the reason I am recommending Edward Jones for that defined contribution versus GMA, who's an outstanding organization. Please understand that they are, and they have told me personally and as a committee that they have no problem if we should decide to go outside. They can handle it, but they don't have the staffing, and they don't have the people on the street that can do effectively what Edward Jones can do. I would like to feel any questions that might be coming up, Mr. Mayor.
Part of the, I mean, did I understand, I don't know if you said yes or I heard this otherwise, under the defined benefit, I guess, plan, it would be the recommendation of a ten-year vesting, is that right, as opposed to five?
Yes, it will be ten-year vesting versus five. That would be a change. I'm sorry if I left that out, but it is. And the early retirement, we changed, it used to be 3% for early retirement per year, and it's now going to go to five.
Especially.
Yes, so the ten-year change will affect only by the new employee, not the existing employee that's been here four years.
That's correct. And there's no change in the old plan.
The defined benefit portion saves the GMA.
Yes, it does. No change. Laurie Waters didn't want to have any disruption or confusion, and they've done a great job. So there's no, we can't find a reason, and we've asked ourselves in committee, is there a reason to make a change? And believe me, we searched, and we couldn't come up with a good reason.
Yes, so we should pass this recommendation on Long Guard, March 21st, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Does anybody have any question? We got two represented from Edward Jones.
Anybody have anything? Mr. Mayor, good job explaining.
Well, I don't know. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next, any possible action on Lower Scottville Road contract, waterline, I think. Thank you, you need to, this is one we had the bids on, isn't it?
There have been discussions, Mayor, in the past regarding this. We've had about seven bids placed on this project. The lowest bid has been opened, and is, was by Street and Pipeline Construction. We are asking, if possible, for action on this. I know it's been a couple of months since the bids have been opened, and anxious to get started on that project.
What was the amount of that, roughly?
A hundred and seventy, about $175,000.
And that, and that item was budgeted, did we? Any discussion on that?
No, I think we do need to move, because this has been hanging for a week.
The bid is actually only going until March 10th. That's the reason that that was...
Do we have a motion?
We have a motion.
Have a session. Any other discussion? Well, now, those are the papers signed by the same guy, all members voted for motion. Streetscape, Marietta Road.
This, gentlemen, we are not asking for any action, it's just more to put these proposals in front of you. There were six bids on the Marietta Road Streetscape project. We've opened those, and the lowest bid is around a little over $1.7 million by CMES. That is under budget from what we originally anticipated, so we're glad to say that. If you have any further questions on that, feel free to ask Mr. West or...
Do we share, if it's under budget, do we share in the savings with the state?
That is the 80-20.
Yes, sir.
That's 80-20.
Yes, sir.
But we have to front the money and get back.
Assuming all the flagging up and down Marietta Road, is that, are the utilities started, or the...
Mr. West, is that correct?
Yes, that's, that's what I'm trying to...
Anyone else have a stretch?
The Marietta Road goes to...
That motor sales area.
Well, yes, from that end, down this end, John Pettit.
Right, right.
Now, what about that stretch from John Pettit?
We took that out.
It was headed out.
About two years ago, we took that out.
We took that out of that, but we still want to do that on our own.
Right, right.
It's our own project, that one is.
Okay, so the question is, the savings that we realized, that we had budgeted a higher number, will that help fund that piece that we have to pay because we couldn't get the right-of-way on that particular site? We had to go across the street, and the state wouldn't allow that to take...
I don't know if that original amount, was the original amount within that 80-20? Would it have been reimbursable as well?
It would have been, had it been left in the progress scope.
So, yes, sir, it would help a little bit, but it, 20%.
You're talking about the...
20%.
On the bid, came in lower than what we had projected.
Well, we would have to pick up, if we had, we originally budgeted just over $2 million, $2.05 million for this project. 20% would have been the city's share, 80% would have been reimbursed by the Georgia Department of Transportation, for variance. So that amount, we'll have to pick up 100% of that. So we technically, the city's portion, we only bet 20% is the difference, so still, I have to run the numbers, but I wouldn't think that the 20% of the savings, budgeted savings, would cover the cost of that.
But with that extra $100,000, does that keep us still under budget for the entire project area?
Yes, yes, we're looking, hopefully.
This section not included there, has it been bid, or was it sort of an alternate or anything of this original bidding?
No, sir, it was moved, removed from the scope totally.
So what are the plans for that, Coach?
We're anticipating coming up with our own plan to add sidewalks where we can on the south side of it.
Right.
And, you know, and possibly have a signed by the contractor out there, possibly be able to redo that section. It won't be nearly as extensive of a deal.
Did that be done, is that change work, change work order?
No, not in this project, they've got it, it's outside the scope.
Okay.
Mr. West, does that mean that, in order to use a sidewalk, pedestrians got to cross the street?
Yeah, yeah, in place, yes.
So, but Dyer, I think he's right, if they're walking towards downtown, they got to cross the street, get to the south side, and walk up, and...
Are sidewalks on Marietta Street?
Not on, it's a four-way side.
No, but it's on the south side of Marietta Street, how long?
Well, not even in front of, like, McCarly's Grocery, you know, where that was, there's none of those there.
But there's crosswalks now, if you're in front of East Marietta, south, across.
Okay, anyone else have anything there, questions?
If you've got any questions, feel free to run through, Mr. West, they've called. I will look at the plan later, if you have.
Thank you. Okay. Discussion, possible action on sewer treatment plant design. Sure, I'm sorry, I missed that. Yeah, discussion of Heritage Park master plan. Actually, what that was, was in Mr. Wood's management letter that you got regarding, as you know, it came before the council, the AMAC, or whatever the company, the name was, that actually did the original design down at Heritage, had met with us and offered to look at maximizing what we could do at Heritage Park. And it seems like an awful big space, not to be utilizing more of it, realizing, however, that a lot of it is floodway and flood plain, and game bill stuff, but there's things that can be done. And they had offered to come back, the landscape architect had come back, take a look at it. I think it was $4,900, something like that, dollars to do that plan, forty-something, forty-seven. And the reason that we didn't go ahead with it some months and months ago was because we wanted to wait to see what was going into Etowah River Park. And now that we got that kind of underway, I think we want to go ahead and take a look at this, so, go ahead.
The question comes up about Heritage Park, and I've had brief discussion with Mr. Dyer about it. Passive versus active parking, the person doing the design needs to know what it is or is not. And I understand it's supposed to be passive, but if we wanted it to be active, am I correct Mr. Dyer, we could make it active?
You could every law. Yeah, there's nothing, I didn't realize, but I did see one day, there was actually an ordinance passed, saying there's no, in parks, there's no football, no...
Yeah, you can't throw any.
You'd have to repeal that.
But, see, the park has so much to offer, but if you're putting the handcuffs on a little bit, how much walking can you do? You know, you can't throw a ball, so...
Well, you can. So that run-of-mind... They've been doing that quite a bit. What the idea was back when that full discussion came about, was that there was some almost semi-pro soccer teams down there in uniforms and all, that were using that and playing soccer down there at that time. And there was, you know, we had several complaints of people pushing strovers or walking or whatever, where soccer balls flying by. And that's what sort of precipitated that. Now, you know, and that's the reason that we went back and said, okay, we're going to have active parks, we're going to have, we're going to make sure that there's place for activities in Etowah River Park. And until that time, until we can do that, we put up that temporary fence there so that you can have activities on the, on the other side of it. That's sort of the way that evolved, but I agree with you, I mean, we, Heritage Park is way underutilized. I think we need, I think, just personally, I think we need, and the landscape architect indicated they could kind of do this, sort of like have a boardwalk or a walking area much closer to the river over there, you know, even if it's a place to walk out from the, from the path we have now over to the bank of the river, and maybe benches, or at least, you know, some place, a picnic or whatever, at least be able to walk along the bank of the river and see the river. I think that's kind of important, really, you know. And so I think there's a lot of things that we can do, but you're right, that we probably didn't need to change something.
Yeah, we need to take the handcuffs off of them, and maybe don't design it as if it's a passing park, but also give us some ideas about if it were, if you didn't have passive.
Well, I don't think, actually, I don't think we've told them anything about passive or active. We want to know what we can put there to maximize the use of that acreage that's there, whatever it is, you know. Yes?
The other thing is, to deal away with the, quote, Philly amphitheater.
Oh, you mean the one there?
Yeah.
The kind of slot that's in the ground?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Deal with the land versus what it is now, so...
Must have been a little amphitheater there.
You could take the, you could take the burners over there, that Streets Department hate to cut, and just move that dirt, put it in the hole.
Anything else on that? Okay, discussion.
Council, don't mind if, I think Mr. Patton may have a comment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, I just wanted to remind all of you that through the request for proposals prior to the final submitted by AMAC, they were asked to look at a master plan that would look at active as well as passive recreational opportunities within all of the acreage that's there with Heritage Park. And then if there's some active ideas the council likes, then you can proceed with the, dealing away with the ordinance about it only being passive.
Mr. Patton, would you also let them know what we're going to do at Etowah Park, so they look at it as a whole?
Yes, sir, and that's also in the proposal.
Thank you. Discussion, possible action on sewer treatment plant design.
Yes. If, maybe, I'd like to ask Dave to take us to come up and give us this overview, so that we can get this project moving, we do have, I think it was a small change order.
Yeah, we've had some discussions back and forth on how to finish off this project. We've come to some agreement, adding a tertiary process or nuclear removal process, reworking some filters. Bottom line is that there's a, it's additional scope for our consultant, and they've got a change order in, maybe $3,000, all of that, but I think we're on the right path here. I think, talking with the consultant, we're looking at about a four-week extension of the design.
And also, because of that change, we are reducing the cost of the, the pillar process.
Yes, yes.
$10.
Yep, I think, I think the bottom line is we're, our estimate is still going to be around $6.5 million.
Versus the other one?
Seven, something.
Seven, seven and a half. So it's, it's going to be...
When we had our committee meeting down there, there were two planes being kicked around, and then we were leading towards the seven plus meeting, and that was going to cause a redesign, and that was going to be the cost of the $84,000?
Um, part of it was a redesign.
But that's where the $84,000 was.
Yes. Yeah, we're still doing the redesign, we're still having a process.
But the design that we, or that you described in your letter, does that cost $84,000 to redesign that?
No, there's, the redesign in either option was, was $50,000. There was, there's been some ongoing out-of-scope work that the consultant has done over the last few months to catch up on.
So that's, the 84 still stands?
Yes.
Yeah, and that's a reason, to get that scope finished up, we need to give them some sort of...
Yeah, they're, they're pretty close to being done with their existing budget, and they just want some assurance that they'll, you know, they can move forward, but they...
So, being that we don't have enough heads here tonight, just do ahead, I'd, I'd like to say just go ahead and give them the assurance that we're going to do it, so they can get the project up. So what does it take?
That motion, as we like.
We can do that.
We'll be good.
I don't want to be out of line.
Make a motion that way.
Yeah, right.
That motion, exactly. To approve a change order for...
I have the exact number, I think, if we could see a letter there, a letter, I think.
Well, just, just have the change order.
Yeah, yes.
We have, we have a copy of that change order anywhere?
There was a letter, it was submitted, I don't know if it's in fact or not, I didn't see the whole thing. I can, I can certainly get the order.
Let's do this subject to, can we do this subject to review by the city attorney on the change order?
Sure.
And authorize, I guess, do I sign it, or somebody else sign it?
Well, I think we'll be...
The change order to the contract?
Yeah, that's all we'll do.
And authorize the mayor to sign the...
So, so spooky.
Okay. Any other discussion, audience? Now, those are the papers signed by the same guy, closed up. Under this, we have the discussion regarding Commissioner Aaron's request for additional funding to the Office of Economic Development. I wanted to put that on there, to make sure that, you know, we have talked about that somewhat. And let me, as requested, of course, is something that could, $20,000, $25,000 in Woodstock and lesser amounts for the smaller cities, to have fun, additional person in operation of the Office of Economic Development. And that office brings there in the chamber, which is where they are now. I would just ask that you think... I would just ask that you think about that between now and the next meeting so that we can vote and tell yes, no, whatever. Maybe we want to have a hybrid that might say, yes, we'll do it. We'll add it to our next year's budget in October. Or we can just say no, yes. But at least I think we can give it an answer and get it off of our agenda, either own or off theirs.
Have you had any further discussion with Commissioner?
I have talked to him, yeah. Again, and I think Ball Ground has certainly, he says Ball Ground has agreed to do that. Woodstock is looking at approving it. And he says, his way, I'm not sure exactly how it worked. He said they were looking at approving it in their next year's budget, which he says in July. But I don't know if that's, I don't know if they're, they voted to do that or not. But pretty much I don't think any of all of us, maybe he had talked with that when they ended up.
Mr. Mayor, the biggest concern I had when we had our meeting as a committee with economic development, chairperson over, I wasn't convinced there was a real firm plan. They're looking for a hundred thousand dollars from all of the various cities, and they're looking at it for three years. They're not looking for it just for one year, which I understand, and I would love to have it, but I sure would like to see something else as far as, you know, how they're gonna use the monies. And I don't know how you...
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
Sure. Yeah, I tend to agree, but I will say that if you looked at the data that they presented there as far as what they're doing in Canton now, as far as the businesses that, and financial investments that's been in Canton now, that we're getting by far the, a much bigger share than most, most any other city. And so, it's not, and I don't think that's because they're trying to steer anything here or steer anything away from here. I think it's because we happen to have what people are looking for, and that's what they're gonna do. But, you know, I don't know if they can come up with a plan to do, you know, they do what they do, you know, they need another person, I assume, from what he says, to help out with them basically in strength to the end of their rope, I guess, as far as being able to do things they want to do. And that's, that's all I...
I understand, was they're asking for it every year from now?
Well, I assume it would be, but it would be, it, along with a lot of things, would be subject to our approval of the budget for one year or next. Or if you decided next year that you didn't want to do it, bam, you don't do it. And again, we can commit a multi-year basis or something like that. Well, I guess we could, with the intergovernmental agreement, but I certainly wouldn't advise it anything more than two or three years.
But the paper indicated it was three years. Three years, and it was like, I think you referred to it as the gentleman's agreement or handshake or something like that. Understand whether...
I just want to bring that up, yeah, so we can be thinking about it. If, you know, if there's any, any conditions or anything, or any thoughts or questions that you want answered between now and then, hit them to me or, in fact, I'll get them to Buzz or Lamb or we'll go directly, go directly to Buzz either one and to Mr. Park and see if they've got anything.
Do we give that to the county or do we just give it to Economic Development Department?
I would give it to the county, because counties want to ask for money. And tell me what you're gonna do with it, I guess would be the question. Tell me exactly what you're gonna do with it. Of course, the biggest part of it is we'll be hiring another body out there. That's gonna be the biggest part of it. And, you know, maybe, maybe they would have some other kind of, you know, marketing efforts, advertising or something else that they won't spend the money on. But I would suspect they'd be able to tell us that, hopefully. Okay. So, Susan, let's go ahead and make sure that's on for the next meeting, and then hopefully we will have some answers, and we can say yes or no or maybe. Out of date, discussion of planning commission recommendation regarding property located at 491 and 493 Hospital Road. Mr. Patton, would you mind?
Yes, still on mine.
And Mr. Patton, would you mind?
No. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. KTB Properties submitted a request to amend the existing conditions on approval for properties at 491, 493 Hospital Road. These are a piece of property that had sixteen units of apartments in two buildings. They were in foreclosure, were never finished, they were purchased out of foreclosure. The purchaser of the foreclosure then in turn sold them to KTB Properties. One of the existing conditions of zoning approval specified that development should be, shall be gated and fenced. Planning Commission held a public hearing on February eighteenth, recommended city council amend the existing condition of approval number seven to read the applicant's agreement to install and maintain fence around the detention retention pond in place of the gate and fencing around the whole property.
Anybody have any questions on that?
I was gonna say, in light of what was said earlier, maybe we ought to include maintenance of the detention pond, proper maintenance of it. I realize there's already an ordinance in place, but we're not gonna mention it to them.
I think we could do that, and basically prior to our approval at the next meeting, right? This will come to our next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. And certainly, I think we could do that.
I'm Ken Vanderhoff, I'm the owner of the project, if anyone has any questions.
Anybody have any question to him?
There, we've been ongoing discussions with the property owner about the detention retention pond and maintenance of it, or the stormwater personnel do stay on top of all of the stormwater facilities in regards to any maintenance issues that needs to be undertaken. This one was in great disrepair at one time, and the property owners have done an awful lot of cleanup out there.
I guess our question would be, you, you have any questions about your responsibility relative to that?
I know, sir, Mr. Mayor. We've already made plans. The detention pond is already fenced, but there's a little area between the detention pond fence and the chain link fence that goes around. And they were concerned about kids getting in there.
Right.
So, we have a plan to, actually, we've got it scheduled for this Saturday to completely fence that, block it off, so no children could get in there. All the apartments are rented, sixteen units. It's taken an eyesore from the city there and a lot of problems, and we've got it worked real good. We're all happy to be here.
Good. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Ben?
I, under number seven, that's the agreement to install and maintain the fence around detention pond, retention pond. And I don't see why we need to add maintenance. It's in our code. The habit here is a restriction, but he sounds like he's already been on top of it and stuff. I think that we live up to our codes that we have in the city. We'd be better off than trying to individually pick out different things, and I don't want that. I'd like to strike that part.
Okay, well, I don't think, it never got in there. I mean, that part never actually got in there to talk about.
Right. Give me a suggestion.
Still wanting to...
Right. I understand the importance of maintaining, but that's what we should be doing as far as our code. That's what we have, and we shouldn't force it versus just picking our code. And so, that's all I want to do. I think we, for the next meeting, under the business, we ought to put down retention ponds because all over the city, our retention ponds are in bad shape.
See, I'm not sure a lot of, a lot of people, and probably including me, understand whose responsibility some of these really are. If we approve, if we approve a development that shows these retention ponds and drainage ways, who is responsible for them?
Private property interest is responsible.
The city is not taking over maintenance of them. The soil erosion control requires them to maintain best management practices, which would include mucking out those ponds. The biggest problem you have is banks end up with them, with all the foreclosures, developers drift off, and, but there's somebody that's on the NPEDS permit, and that's his responsibility. The permit holder is responsible.
That's a big tricky going on.
And that's the responsibility of your developer.
It's only you and the developer.
Oh, they do now? Yeah, we do now, but I bet you we got twenty retention ponds out there.
So, in other words, it's whoever holds title of the property.
So, what is, what is a city's position in this action?
The city never took over maintenance.
We approved developments that showed these things, showed the drainage. And, I mean, when we take over a roadway or we take over a drainage easement, do we not take over a drainage easement? Unless it's within the right of way of the road or something?
I don't think we do take easements from them, so... And I understand your point. It's, at what point do we have a responsibility, but we have not accepted it up to this point, so...
The development regulations clearly specify that the ongoing maintenance of all the stormwater facilities does rest with private property interest. That's on all of the recorded plans also. But is there a definition of what maintenance is?
Yes, that's in the state law and in our coverage.
It sounds like we're all, it's all covered then by laws.
It's an enforcement issue.
Enforcement is what we're not gonna crack.
So, but is it our responsibility to enforce it?
Yes.
It is.
It's a code violation for them not to do it. It's a city code violation.
Well, then, that's what we needed, isn't it? It's a matter of...
It's probably, correct. It would be council directing, do you want those efforts to be made?
Well, in that sense, I guess, my job and grace guy, is that what you're saying?
They're all over the city. Well, really, we could just make that part of the record now and don't have to bring it up the next meeting. That's, that's really enforced, I guess.
Okay, that a point of emphasis in the kind of enforcement, I think, is what you're saying.
And that would be enforced by random?
No. The other.
That's Merrick.
Merrick, with Stormwater and Engineering Officer Johnson gives assistance. Any of us that are out in the field, if we see an issue of enforcement nature, will contact Merrick or Officer Johnson, or if it's something with the building, Mark Cross, be aware of their personnel. We try to all work together in these types of actions.
Some of them, I will say this, some of them may be the main, may be the responsibility of the homeowners association if the developer has conveyed them to the homeowners association.
That is correct. And that's gonna be a shock.
Well, I mean, that was the intent. Ten years ago or so, a lot of the development rates were changed to require a homeowners association so that there would be a responsible party. It's just the developers don't always tell.
Right, but in these cuts on the job, the homeowners association, which is controlled by the development, he sees a big cost coming up. All he has to do is that, boy, I'm gonna transfer that to the homeowners association. The homeowners don't have a vote, whether to accept it or not. He just transferred it because he's a hundred percent of the voting. So, they're just gonna move it to the homeowners association, which means for us, the grace guy will have to pay for all of them.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I think that's the intent of our ordinance, is that it would be the homeowners association. Because the developer eventually sells out and is done. And so, you fix that problem by requiring there to be a homeowners association. It's just a problem.
Is there gonna be a problem with that, Mr. Patton?
With what?
With Merrick and any enforcement?
No. Merrick has worked and has informed appropriate sources on issues with the retention pond. We've worked almost a year in regards to one out at Canton Marketplace. Involves some citations going to magistrates, court, things of that nature. It's an ongoing effort, Merrick, as well as some other personnel that are dedicated for the stormwater program.
Stormwater? How does that fit in?
That's what's going into the detention.
That's back in my mind, I'm saying. Anything else on that? Let's move on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council.
Discussion of budget amendment for funding of the City of Canton Economic Development Office. Your nation's gonna handle that, I believe.
Mayor, council, you'll find in your agenda packet attachment number six, which is budget amendment number eight for your consideration. We're not asking for, obviously, action tonight, but if you'll please review. If you have any questions regarding that, let us know. In summary, what we're doing is setting up budget line items for an economic director slash Main Street director, along with a special events coordinator. And we are taking funds from one, the Main Street function that was recently back there. We're taking that and moving that to this function for five twelves, or five months of the remaining calendar year.
Do we know about what the dollar now will be for the remainder of fiscal year?
Yes, sir, it is approximately eighty thousand dollars for the remainder of the year, plus two.
Of course, that depends on when the hiring takes place.
Right now, we're targeting May first as far as the budget.
And that's what you're...
That's what I'm targeting, as far as I know.
Yes, sir. Okay, five, so, so we'd be looking on an annualized basis of about a hundred and seventy-five thousand?
A hundred and ninety. A hundred and ninety, annualized, okay.
This, I hope, that our, March twenty-first meeting. Anyone else have any questions? Job description, out of date, job description for economic development coordinator and marketing and special event coordinator. Any, any, anything on that one? Just continue back.
Yeah, segue into that. These are the job descriptions for those positions. Review those, answer some questions, let us know.
So, I mentioned this to the mayor earlier, but if we go ahead and approve these job descriptions tonight, that'll give us just, you know, two more weeks head start. We now may first to, you know, start the hiring process. I think we've had time to review these descriptions, so the city manager asked me if we would consider going ahead and approving that tonight. So, I'm, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve these, these two job descriptions so we can move forward with the hiring process.
Second. Have a motion. Second, any other discussion or questions? If not, those are factors that I got. I oppose, no. All members vote for the motion. Discussion of the capital improvement plan.
Yes, sir. Just before the meeting, Ms. Stanton distributed a little packet of information that's labeled City of Canton Roads and Bridges Program Update. What this is intending to do is to establish some routine schedule for us to maintain our roads, sidewalks and bridges. Please review this. Mr. West, Mr. Wood, or myself will be more than happy to answer any questions. I think it's imperative that the city get on a schedule, a routine schedule, to devote funds and a time allocation toward resurfacing repairs of streets and sidewalks.
All the question I have is, a hundred and twenty miles of roughly of streets, are those entirely city streets and not state streets, state roads? Or you don't?
They are not entirely.
So, there's some state highways in here?
And you can also regulate some, we have some private streets as well. We're trying to use round numbers here. You get a, you know, get a program in order.
Okay, so, if a hundred and twenty miles, I guess if we're, if we're looking at some of them, like State Route Five Business or State Route one forty, we wouldn't want those in there, would we? Because we wouldn't be maintaining those, would we?
No, not ones that are maintained by D.R. or something.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions, comments? Yeah, as Nathan and I talked about, it looks like, you know, if you did have a hundred and twenty, you need to, if you got, what, six miles, five, six miles a year?
Right.
When do you, like I asked him, when was the last time that we did six miles a year? You know?
I couldn't answer that one. That's a that's a large goal.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
We did five, six streets less two years ago.
Yeah, we did several streets.
Two thousand and eleven.
Six miles is a long way.
But some of them were, well, it might not have been six, but it was a pretty good mile.
I agree. We need to we need a plan to do something. Now, I don't know if we can catch up to six miles a year, if we can do that. Sure need to be working towards doing something like that.
We plan for the town made program to cover about a mile a year. If if we only use that on resurfacing, but we're gonna probably use those on some other things, sidewalks.
Who handles those projects? Is that something the city done and we're reimbursed, or are they, does they come to do it?
The city has it has it has changed in twenty thirteen of where they reimburse. They're giving us a fixed amount based on the linear mileage of streets. And we can expect that amount per year as we have to match thirty percent of that position and go through a process, an application, let them know what we're going to spend the money on and let it prove it when we get the check. Matter of fact, we've already gotten a check this year from the town.
Wow. How much was it, eighty or something?
No, it's about a hundred and thirty-six thousand. So when we match it, we'll end up spending around a hundred and eighty thousand.
I want to thank the engineering department for putting together this because in the past we have kind of been shooting in the dark on what's needed. If we lose a car in a pothole or something, that's where we will take care of it better than that. This is a great plan. It's something we can look at in planning forward. So hats off to you.
I'll just thank you, but just remember it's a work in progress. We're gonna keep updating as we go on.
Mr. Mayor? Yes. I'd like to say. Thank the engineering department for taking the job. Well, that's the street looks great.
That that was another issue. Mr. Wood had asked me if you got nothing. They don't know the streets that probably happened. Did you guys notice the flat?
I didn't see it yet, but.
What do y'all think about the flat?
It looks great.
The seal? The letter should be on this week and we're proposing to move that statue early next week.
Good. You scheduling some type of dedication or something?
I don't know. I thought I'd leave that to me then.
I think we all have something there. I mean, it's it's going really.
Turn it dirt.
Yeah.
Well, wait till the.
When is the Marietta Street project? I think they call it Connector, Connector.
Main Street. Right now, on that particular project, the right of way acquisition is in progress and would be had. The land base kind of been sliding back, possibly June, but we think that's gonna be harder to meet because of the right of way issues that we're having with one of the one of corporate business, the Hall Tale for one, has to climb the ladder through the corporate channel, I guess you'd say. But that one should be coming up very quickly after we get to the east.
So when the Marietta Road, that that'll be started fairly soon, right?
Yes.
And what was kind of the completion time on that?
That gave us the right of way at twelve mile.
And that does have sidewalks on both sides of the road up that up Copper Mine Hill, right?
No.
Just one side?
Um, it was just one side, I believe.
Originally, they had two sides, I think.
I haven't looked at that. I think it varies in places.
They had it, they had two sides originally. I don't know if it got changed or not, you know. I understood it couldn't change it or something, but be too much a problem.
Those have to sure. We can plug that.
Anyone else? Thank you, Governor. Mr. Rush has asked that his item of discussion of fire department financing be moved to the next meeting, I believe. Unless some of you are gonna take it up for him. City manager had a report in with a package, I think, for your for your information. The mayor's report, I, you know, we talked about the retrieve, the workshop, or whatever you wanna call it, to to really begin the process of working toward a vision for the city. And looking out on you and if you work with Bob or anyone else in this wood, try to put something up that we can we can do that and get something started on it, I think will be beneficial to us.
Will do.
Also, regarding the appointment of the members to the Mayor's Commission of Canton's Vision for the Future, I had asked that each member have their, not recommendation, but their actual appointments to that at this meeting and and Mr. Bishop, do you have yours? You already given up?
I turned in two about a month ago.
Okay. You wanna get, what I'd like to do is if you wanna announce who they are, keep an eye. And what I'd like to do is have them here on March forty-first meeting, so we can actually have a swearing in of those twenty-one members and some photographs. I think that's important.
Well, I'll have them there.
Okay, okay. Bill, you you gave yours, you three, which was, will I write that down? Which ones did you have, Bill?
Well, I'll, you want me to just? Ben, you can.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, Ben Key, Jory Mullins, and Lo Di Gold.
Right, okay. And Hooky?
I got one in a definite making.
Okay. What do you have? What we need to do, we need to make sure these people are here if you can. And the reason I'm saying that, I'd like to get those names and regress this decision as quickly as possible so that we can let them know that they've been appointed to this commission and ask them if they can at all, at all possible, to be here at the next meeting to be introduced and and, you know, I think I don't wanna make a big deal out of this, but I think it is a pretty big deal, actually.
As long as we're on that point. Back then, back in two thousand and eight, we had the Horizon two thousand and thirty Comprehensive Plan, Vision for the City. A good number of citizens were on that. Hooky remembered that he was actually the chairman of that, took a little jog in his memory. We spent quite a number of months, a couple of times a month, meeting. And I meant to bring the book, but I did not bring it to the next meeting. It's mine, it's not the stick. On it was a number of key issues that we did a work through. As far as I know, that book basically was shelved, although I know Mr. Patton has responsibility of reporting to the state on updates, and we had a five-year update. But my point is, we put in a lot of hours, a lot of time, and went for naught.
I didn't go for naught, I don't think.
Well, I I've gone through the book and I can't find anything that was basically laid out, that was achieved. Now, what I want to have is some sort of plan, your vision, the concept on this committee that will make it a living, breathing organ of this city and not be put on the shelf after the year or whatever. And these people who are signing up will know that they're gonna be on there long term. Now, we can change them out if somebody needs to leave and add somebody in, but what we need to make that is a really a functioning end to accomplish these goals. Because when it came out and just sat, it failed.
Yeah.
And I have no problem with the concept. I think it's great, but I don't wanna see it go down the tank like this one did.
Well, that didn't go down the tank. Let me explain something there. The the Commission on Canton's Future is not like this document that you're talking about. At least, that's my vision of it. It's not like that at all, even though there is some information in there that might be helpful to this to this body. That was part of a requirement, something the city had to do. We didn't, we don't have to do this vision of Canton's future. We don't have to do that at all. We had to do that to maintain our approved government status or whatever you wanna call it. And so that was done. And sometimes when you're just made to do things like that in order to be able to still get grants down the road and this sort of thing, you just, you know, it's, you do what you have to do to accomplish that goal, and that's about it. I don't see this commission as being that at all. I think, you know, in in many cases, I don't I don't even see it getting down to the specifics of we need this here, we need that there, we need this. I think it's just basically, what do we need? What do we want to see here? Without, I don't know that we have to get down to the, to the, this is gonna cost this at this time, it's gonna cost that at that time, and all that. I mean, to the really, you know, strong details anyway. I mean, I think some of it you have to do, but not not entirely. But the bottom line is, this is this is something that is not required. It's something that we do because we wanna do and we want to know, hopefully, you know, create some sort of pathway that we wanna try to follow, at least this council can can follow and and reflect back and measure whether or not we are successful or not. We can look back and say, well, are we still within that pathway? You know, not not real specific, but are we are we achieving ultimately what we wanna do?
Yes, sir. That was the resolution that we adopted back on the twenty-sixth of March, two thousand and nine, because the state of Georgia has adopted the Georgia Planning Act of nineteen eighty-nine, which mandates that the local government shall draft and adopt comprehensive plans provided through and consistent planning with regard to land within the governmental limits. And that's how we.
That was why we required.
But in so doing, that was a lot of labor. It has been mentioned numerous times that we had the charter committee spend many hours, two years in the planning, and that was recognized numerous times, too. So I just wanna make sure that when we get these people, we gotta give a commitment. And that commitment is that we will do something with it as a council versus just have them do all this work and then, thank you very much. I support it. I just said, that's all I wanna make sure.
I would hope that everyone on this board would feel that we don't want that to be a waste of time. Like the charter. No, if you want something done, I'm sure, everybody's had previous careers, but if you don't inspect it, it won't get done. So in order to inspect what we want, and this is this vision, that we're trying to work towards that vision, we have on our agenda, our city manager's report every every meeting, we have a mayor's report every meeting. There's no reason why we can't add a third there. Maybe not every meeting like a work session, but it it might be too much of a burden on them, but at least every formal meeting, or maybe it might be better to put them in the work session, meeting rushers, the formal meeting. But the point is that it's there once a month, one way or the other, that we're gonna have somebody get out and give us a little bit of an update. And when you inspect something like that and listen to it, if you don't have anything going on for a couple of months, hey, we better go back and look at it. But if we do that for a period of years, then it will become, hopefully, it'll become natural. I will take the liberty here to say, forgive me, Mr. Mayor, but in that report that was done in two thousand and eight that I was chair of, there was in two thousand and eight a recommendation for three fire stations. And the locations are the same locations that we were presently talking about now. And they actually had some costs there, something like seven point eight billion dollars. And this bond referendum is only for six, so it's been five years of inflation, some some inflation, and we still have reduced it by one point seven or one point eight billion dollars. Do you recall whether or not that projection included vehicles? It did. And other equipment? It just said stationing equipment. Okay. And it had it staggered out. We were supposed to be have our first station working this year. Actually, I think it was last year. Okay. On the continuing with our Commission on the Future, Bob had sent to our clerk three names, George Connor, Rodney Stevenson, and Jose Ayala, I guess, A Y A L A. I'm sure he pronounced that. But that's just the, actually, Jack had indicated that he would like to see Andy Alexander, Ken Roberts, and Clinton Weatherby. And I've asked Dennis Burnett, Bill Grant, and Nell McGruder to to participate in that. Is anyone else on there? But anyway, those of you who haven't submitted the names or completed it, please do so as soon as you can, win some addresses so as soon as you can contact these people and try to get up here so that we can meet them and get this thing moving.
Mr. Cummings?
Yeah, Mr. Cummings was John Rust. Let's see, who was the other two? John?
Jennifer Dunn.
Jennifer, that's right, Jennifer Dunn and Cory Wilson. Yeah, Cory was in there. So we got those today. Hopefully, hopefully, as soon as we get everybody's name, if you would, send us a a list, the council list, we see who everyone is on there. Okay, the other discussion, the fire bond referents, and Hooky had already brought up a little of that. Only thing I wanna do is remind everybody to go out and vote, regardless of how you vote, get out and vote. Voting is always important. I also wanted to say that for those of you who may not know, you'll be voting at your precincts where you would normally vote at a county or state presidential election or something like that, because they're out in the neighborhood now. Everybody doesn't vote at City Hall anymore on this election. So just just try to remember. And hopefully, if you had any doubts, I guess you could call Susan or call the board of elections at Jenny Munda out at the Office of Elections there in the main street.
Just my question.
Yes.
Is the information readily available at City Hall, like we asked for, the, you know, any the numbers, the any factual information?
It's mine, and it's on the internet.
Okay, on the website?
Oh, it's on the website, yes.
City website, okay. If somebody just walked into City Hall, could they also get papers?
Yes.
Available upon request.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Huff did touch on a couple of points under the Horizon two thousand and thirty Comprehensive Plan. And yes, in there was also fire protection, and it was discussion about what the city would be needing to build out on this. And part of that discussion, the city plans to construct the public safety complex, which will be shared by the police and fire department. Both departments should have their headquarters, and that's kind of roughly what we're looking at at the bluffs. The city is planning additional three fire stations. These stations would include space for a police substation. The city is planning a mixed equipment and apparatus of each, new fire stations reflecting the surrounding land use of the structure. And this was in two thousand and eight. And this was in two thousand and eight. Now, there has been numerous dialogue going on through various means of communication. And in that plan, there was this plan that identified, as Mr. Hudson referred to, as about Laurel Canyons, the Bluff, and the Canton Place, which was now Canton Marketplace and or the hospital. So some have that question, what sort of planning was done? It's like they're referring to the fact that, um, this council, uh, in the past six months or eight months, just kind of dreamed up, whoops, this has fire departments, this has these stations. This is five years of planning, five years of dialoguing, five years of not having the money to be able to do anything, and we're behind. On November the twentieth, two thousand and nine, Fire Protection Facilities was put together under a capital improvements element. And it was identified again what we have, the stations that we would be building, and what the cost factors. This is stuff that is readily available to any citizen who would take the time to dig in and get facts versus putting out misinformation. We also have a campaign going on in this city, uh, vote against the bond. Now, I would like to know, uh, I know Jeff Brown, 'cause he's on the patch all the time with his input, and he has absolute all the right in the world to put that out. But what I would like to know is, who is this campaign? What is their reasoning? Because we get a bunch of different issues. They have done an excellent job in getting out the word and stopping this bond referendum, these beautiful postcards that came out. And if I might take the liberty, when operational costs are included, the average homeowner can expect sixty percent plus property tax increase in the next four years. Where do those numbers come from? That's erroneous. Basically, it's a lie. Senior homestead exemption could be reduced or eliminated, another lie. In order for the finances to work in downtown Canton, fire station may be closed. If they took the time to look, we are remodeling that fire station, another lie. Business will be discouraged from moving to Canton due to the high taxes. Basically, that's an excellent point, because we are not getting business here because we have a ISO rating. And if we get a lower one, we'd have a better opportunity. And, you know, to me, if they would just step forward and say who they are, what they are, versus working around in the coke and dagger operation, the county sent out for host, the local sales tax used to reduce property taxes, a program. In their documents, they state that they have the average senior homeowner in a hundred and sixty thousand dollar home has the following property tax bill. I'll skip all the bills except for the fire fund. The county is expecting that senior to pay two hundred and ten dollars and eighty-four cents. Same for the average homeowner, paying the same. There's no tax exemptions or any dodge that seniors will get if it ends up where we would have to look at going to the county. So much misinformation is floating around here. It's a shame that we can't have the citizens realize the jeopardy that they're putting us in if we don't have this service. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. Anything else on that? All right. I believe that's, uh, that's all I have.
entertain.
Intervene much, Mr. Mayor? Any other discussion? Not, perhaps, if I say aye?